Good afternoon. My name is Ed Bernard, and I serve as the Chair of the Financial Accounting Foundation. I'd like to welcome our stakeholders who are tuning into today's meeting. Today's meeting will include reports from the FASB Chair, the GASB Chair, and the FAFF Executive Director. We'll receive a report on the latest activities of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council, and we'll also receive a report from the Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we get to those reports, I'd like to take a moment to recognize two new members of the trustees appointed last November. Professor Michael Clement is a faculty member at the Macomb School of Business at the University of Texas, and also serves as a visiting professor at Harvard Business School. And Beth Pierce, who was the former Treasurer of the State of Vermont, and who recently served as the Chair of the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. So please join me in welcoming both of these fine individuals to the board. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank Trustee Manju Ganerewala for agreeing to fulfill the roles of Secretary and Treasurer for the Board, as well as agreeing to co-chair the Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee upon David Liller's departure from those roles. In addition, I'd like to acknowledge Trustee Tim Kristin, who will now serve as the Vice Chair of the Trustees upon Mary Barth's departure. We have one more appointment that I'd like to note at this time. Lisa Washburn, Managing Director and Chief Credit Officer for Municipal Market Analytics, Inc., currently the GASCAC representative for the National Federation of Municipal Analysts, will serve as the Vice Chair of GASCAC for the remainder of her final term until December 31st, 2024. Lisa has served on GASCAC for five years, representing NFMA, and will continue in that role. I'd also like to mention that the trustees have kicked off a formal review to assess the effectiveness of the Private Company Council. This is our second formal review of the PCC, with the first one being conducted in 2015. As you know, the PCC is the primary advisory body to the FASB on private company matters, using the Private Company Decision Making Framework to advise the Board on appropriate accounting considerations for private companies. We'll soon issue a formal comment document and look forward to receiving and reviewing stakeholder input. Stakeholder contributions are important to the success of this review and critical to the governance process. Now with that, let's move to our regular agenda. First item of business is to approve the minutes from the Board's November 14th, 2023 meeting. May I have a motion? Thank you. Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We'll now move to the reports from FASB, FASAC, and GASB. Rich?
Great. Thanks, Ed. It's my pleasure to share the FASB's report for the fourth quarter of last year. Suffice it to say, there was a busy end to 2023. We're proud of what we accomplished, but we're energized moving into this year and what we can accomplish this year. During the fourth quarter, the FASB issued final standards in three priority areas raised during our agenda consultation. They were segment reporting, accounting for crypto assets, and income tax disclosures. We also completed a final standard on disclosure improvements related to SEC rulemaking. The completion of and progress of all these projects, some of which have been on our agenda in one form or another for years, are a major accomplishment made possible by our Board, our staff, and most importantly, our stakeholders. In addition, we added three new projects to our technical agenda, all of which benefited from input from stakeholders as part of our agenda consultation process, as well as spending time on our research agenda to provide our Board with key information as to how these projects could be addressed and potential paths to completion. The three new projects are accounting for government grants, derivative scope refinements, and statement of cash flows targeted improvements. In December of last year, we also issued a proposed standard based on a consensus of the Emerging Issues Task Force to improve the application and relevance of accounting guidance related to induced conversions of convertible debt. The Board looks forward to redeliberating these issues after the public comment period has concluded this March. Staying on the theme of the EITF, stakeholders who participated in our agenda consultation process provided valuable feedback on how we could better leverage the expertise of this talented group of professionals. As previously discussed with this group, in 2024, the FASB will be making improvements to the EITF process to allow it to be more effective and efficient in addressing technical accounting issues as they arise in markets. And we expect the new EITF to have its first meeting later this spring. Moving on to other projects on our agenda, we continued to perform extensive outreach on our proposed standard on disaggregation of income statement expenses, including a December 13th public roundtable where stakeholders shared feedback on the benefits and costs of this proposal. This proposal, if finalized, would complete the final step in providing detail of expense line items on the income statement and complements prior projects on revenue and income tax disclosures. Moving on to the post-implementation review, our post-implementation reviews of the Revenue Recognition, Leases, and Credit Losses Standard continue to help us fine-tune GAAP guidance in these areas. As part of our review of the Revenue Recognition Standard, we hosted a November 10th public roundtable with stakeholders who have experience with the standard, including investors, practitioners, and preparers across various industries. Moving on to the concept statements, the quarter ended on a high note with the issuance of our proposed new chapter of our conceptual framework related to measurement of items recognized in the financial statements. If finalized by the Board, the proposed concept statement chapter would complete this project. While this project has been on our agenda since 2004, and the first of eight chapters was issued in 2010, our Board and staff have emphasized the importance of this project. And when this chapter is completed, five of the eight chapters of the concept statements would have been completed in the last three years. On behalf of my colleagues on the Board, I thank you for continued support as we look forward to fulfilling our mission. I do look forward to taking your questions. Ed?
Thanks, Rich. Any questions for Rich? Larry?
Yeah, Rich, you mentioned changes to the EITF process and that the first meeting will be in the spring. What changes should we expect to see in how the EITF actually operates?
Yeah. The things that won't change are the EITF meetings will still be in public, and it will still be a group of experts in their areas dealing with emerging technical accounting issues. What will change is we're giving them, A, more control of their agenda, and the output of the EITF process will be a recommended agenda decision to the Board with a proposed solution. What we're hoping this will do is actually identify emerging issues earlier and provide our Board consideration of adding items to our agenda with a proposed solution, leveraging the expertise of these experts. Our hope is it will identify more issues on a timely basis and give our Board actually an idea of solutions that we may consider implementing fairly timely.
Any other questions for Rich? Rick?
Thanks, Ed. You know, Rich, you and the FASB have really done a lot in the last year to knock off some projects that have been around for a while, I think, since the last agenda consultation. What do you see as coming up next for FASB? Are you going to go out again for another agenda consultation anytime soon?
So if you look at the effective revamp of our agenda, and I will call it that, as a result of the last agenda outreach effort, in 2021, we took existing projects on our agenda and created a path that a majority of our Board supported going forward. We added new projects, and we have been accomplishing them. While we can continue to cede our agenda with normal agenda requests, it does look like, and I've announced previously, it's time really to go out for another agenda outreach request. And I think part of this is, while people will come to us with issues, it's important that we once again take the pulse of our stakeholders on what should be the future direction of the Board, what should be our priorities and why, and share that with all of our stakeholders.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yep, Manju?
Rich, FASB is doing post-implementation reviews with regards to some of your major projects, major standards that were issued last several years, like credit losses, leases, and revenue recognition. And I understand the reviews are still ongoing, but can you just kind of update us on recent activities in this area?
Sure. And if you follow those three projects, revenue recognition is furthest along in the post-implementation review, followed by leasing, which is a little behind it, and followed by the credit losses standard. And as we've gone through the post-implementation review, we've actually done standard setting on each of those areas, either proposed or finalized. And it's because, as we heard, there were issues or things that we could, improvements we could make related to those standards, we wanted to take real-time action. So we've been doing that. The other important part of the PIR is really lessons learned more generally. And what could we learn for the next major standard that we set? And there are certain things that we heard about, interactions with business combinations, transition, that maybe there's another way we should look at those as we're doing future standard setting and making sure we're identifying those issues as part of setting the standard versus afterwards. And so I would say that's another thing we're focused on. I did mention we had the roundtable on revenue recognition. That was very helpful to us because it brought stakeholders from all of our different groups together to share what their experiences were with the standards. From the investor's perspective, what's working, what information, what's working well, what's helping them with their capital allocation decisions? From a preparer perspective, where were the challenges, what's working well? And then from the auditor perspective, they see a broad cross-section of all of that. What are they seeing in their client base and what lessons could be learned? So it was a great discussion. It was a public discussion, and that will help us as we finalize our report.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Anything else for Rich? And if not, we'll go to Joel Black for the GASB Chair Report.
Thanks, Ed, and thanks to all of you for being here and allowing me to present an overview of what the GASB had going on for the fourth quarter of 2023. We issued Statement 102 on certain risk disclosures, which addressed user needs to provide information on a couple of risks that governments face, one being concentrations such as a major taxpayer or industry supporting a town, the other being constraints, which would be like a third-party imposed limitation on the financial flexibility of a government, like a property tax ceiling, something like that. But our standard didn't require all governments to disclose that risk if they have it, but rather when that risk is heightened. And we did that to try to provide users with really essential information only when they needed it and avoid boilerplate disclosures. So we think users are really going to benefit from this new standard when it's implemented. Also, in December, we approved the technical plan for the first third of 2024. The only changes in the plan were to take Statement 102 and that project off as it was issued. And the other was to add another research activity for GAAP conformity, or maybe better called utilization, which now pairs with a pre-agenda research item we have on GAAP structure. We call the GAAP, the new one, an other research activity because it has no intention of resulting in a standard-setting project. It rather is just providing the Board and others with information that should result from that research. We do continue to make progress on all of our agenda projects. I'll highlight the two biggest and comprehensive projects, the financial reporting model, our long, ongoing project. We actually are very close to issuing with a scheduled kind of vote on a ballot draft of that standard at our April meeting this year. Revenue and expense recognition, last quarter, I talked about good progress we'd made on one of the most complex issues, which was grant accounting. We continued that into the fourth quarter, and I think we really are at a point of having a good handle on one of the most complicated issues and are now moving that project into other phases. The post-implementation reviews and our projects continue as well. We did have roundtables on the other post-employment benefits project. And our pension, PIR, which is the furthest along, actually is very close to completion, and we're scheduled to present the results of that to the Trustees Oversight Committee at your May meeting. Financial statement taxonomy, we continue to progress, still early stages of that project, but we're adding resources to that team and making really good progress and communicating that progress to our stakeholders, including the SEC as they contemplate the Financial Data Transparency Act's implications and implementation. Finally, I'll highlight our podcast, right? We had during the quarter the second episode of our Bridging the Gap podcast, which focused and directed people and informed stakeholders about our exposure draft on a smaller project to improve the classification and some disclosure of certain capital assets, which we did get comment period closed on January 5th, and we got good response to that. But we have a few podcast episodes planned for next quarter. So I know everybody in this room probably has already clicked, rated, and subscribed to the podcast. But for those in, you know, the public that are listening, please go out, check out the podcast, click, rate, subscribe. It's available on Apple, Spotify, or wherever you get your podcasts. With that, I will conclude my report, but happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for that PSA. Thanks, Joel. Any questions for Joel? Rick?
Yeah, I'll jump in because I'm interested in this one. Thanks, Joel. You know, you mentioned the GAAP conformity or utilization project, and you kind of alluded to the difference between how you perceive that project versus the, you know, the dual-authority GAAP project. Can you tell us a little bit more about that? Why or how are they different?
Sure. They are very different, although they both kind of, in a way, do deal with how people utilize our GAAP. The one that we added, the GAAP structure, the dual-authority project that we added last in August, is more about how people that already use GAAP consume the actual literature, right? We have original pronouncements. We have a codification. Are there ways we can improve that? Is that the best way for people who are already decided to use GAAP to utilize the GAAP? The more recent one that we added back in December was the GAAP conformity or utilization is really an informational research activity to try to determine how many of the governments in the U.S. actually use GAAP in their reporting. And then we're hoping to build a model that will allow us to more often determine that number so that we can see trends in, or is it increasing use of GAAP, decreasing use of GAAP, et cetera? So that's the kind of difference, although they're both titled GAAP, and they're both research and ongoing. At the same time, they are a little bit different.
Great. Thanks. Any other questions for Joel?
I have a question.
Okay.
Joel, you talked about major financial reporting model, right? And it seems like it appears to be, it will conclude soon. Does your Board anticipate making any further substantial revisions to this standard?
Sure. Following the big change we talked about with you guys back in the summer, where we took governmental funds out of the scope, that was a major change. I think, other than that, we have not made really substantial changes. Some clarifications and edits from the feedback we received to the exposure draft. But I think all the other pieces of that project that we're moving forward, including the exposure draft, remain in there and seem to be progressing towards issuance, hopefully, in April, approval and issuance in April, without major changes. So I wouldn't expect any more. But that governmental fund taking out was certainly a major, major change and shift.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Anything else for Joel? Okay. Seeing none, we'll now turn to Mike Morrow for the FASAC report. Thanks, Mike. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. I have two meetings to report on, as well as a number of activities coming up in the next two weeks, so I'll try to be brief. I'll start with the September meeting. The first topic was FASB's project on disaggregation income statement expenses. FASAC members provided input on the proposed update and whether the proposed disclosures for public companies' expenses would be useful to investors and operable. I'd say across the Board, the members were generally supportive of this topic. Investors expressed strong support for the project and suggested that disclosures should be required on an interim basis as well. Also suggested further disaggregating selling expenses, however, they acknowledged the potential costs of providing that information. Some investors also suggested that these disclosures be required for private companies. Preparers shared potential challenges in operationalizing the guidance, expected level of implementation efforts, especially for companies with inventory and manufacturing expenses. The second topic was the FASB Standard Setting Process Benefit Cost Analysis. During that session, council members provided input about the Board's standard-setting process and how the Board defines and assesses the expected benefits and proposed costs of changes to accounting standards. I thought the council was very much an educational session, I think, for the members, and they were impressed and supportive of the Board's current process and efforts to consider both the costs and the benefits. Suggested the Board continue to focus on obtaining detailed feedback to balance these. And I'm supportive also of the efforts that the Board goes through to be transparent about this process because I think a few folks believed it was a good process, and they would be in advantage to continue to share that. The December FASAC meeting, the first topic was the post-implementation review on revenue recognition, which Rich touched on earlier. FASAC members received an update on the project, discussed the feedback received at the Revenue PIR Roundtable. Overall, council members agreed with the feedback received at the PIR Roundtable and supported the principles-based revenue recognition model, noting it provides more useful information to investors compared to previous models. Some council members did comment that the removal of industry-specific guidance under the previous revenue guidance affected comparability across some industries. And in particular, I think the group noted the effectiveness and importance of the Transition Resource Group on that standard and how that helped in implementing it. The second topic was accounting for environmental credit programs. Council members provided input on the scope of the Board's project and decisions on asset recognition and measurement. Council members indicated that they expect these programs to grow and evolve and emphasized the importance of transparency and decision-useful disclosures. They stated the Board's definitions of environmental credit obligation were appropriately aligned with the programs addressed by the project and commented that the Board's decisions on asset recognition and measurement seem operable. Some council members highlighted potential cross-cutting issues with other accounting topics, such as government grants and income taxes. Looking forward, this Thursday, we have an orientation session for our 10 newly-appointed FASAC members. And then on Monday, we'll have our annual administrative session for all members, which includes a self-review of our operations and effectiveness. And then next Tuesday, we have a full FASAC meeting. The topics will be a session to discuss FASB's use of options and practical expedience in standard setting and the existing guidance on change in accounting principles. And we'll also be getting an update on some of the key projects that the Board plans to expose or finalize in the coming months, as well as next steps on other FASB projects. Lastly, I'd note that in January, I did one-on-one sessions with each of the Board members and the Technical Director to discuss both FASAC operations and future meeting topics that they would find most worthwhile for FASAC, and outlook of potential future topics as in the appendix of your materials. Welcome your input on these or any other topics, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
So I would just say first, thank you for your leadership on this. That's a whole lot of work you just described. Any questions for Mike? Great. Then if not, we'll turn to the report from the Oversight Committee. And Manju and Tim, I'm not sure who is kicking that off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll kick it off, and then my Co-Chair, Tim Ryan, will pick it up. The Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee met virtually on Friday, February 23rd. This meeting included informational reports from FASB Chair Rich Jones and GASB Chair Joel Black. In addition, we do, as we do at each meeting, we discuss advisory group FASB and GASB Board meetings that committee members have observed in the past quarter. We also heard from Trustee Rick Rysik and FASB liaison to the PCC, Sue Cosper, regarding their observations of the PCC meeting that took place on December 14th and December 15th. And we heard from Trustee Brian Lewis regarding his meeting observations of the GASB meeting on December 14th. The committee and its participants engaged in a beneficial discussion on several significant topics during our meeting. For any stakeholders interested in viewing a recording of the public session of our meeting, you can find this on the FAFF website. Regarding, with regards to report received from GASB, Chair Joel Black discussed the GASB's ongoing efforts in the last quarter, including the issuance of GASB Statement Number 102, Certain Risk Disclosures. Many of these matters have already been covered in GASB Chair Black's report during this session. The committee also discussed other topics like the PIR reviews and the status of the five standards that are under PIR, and update on the current environment and impact on GASB, current environment and its impact on GASB's work, and overview of several internal initiatives, which were mainly focused on GASB's new hire, a taxonomy project manager, and its engagement of a taxonomy consultant to support the GASB's important work related to taxonomy research and development work. And with that, I will turn things over to my Co-Chair, Tim Ryan.
Thank you, Manju, and good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining. One of the things that we did, as Rich just went through his report, I'll give you a little bit more color on what we covered in the FASB part of our oversight meeting. As Rich talked about, we got an update on the various projects that have been progressing nicely or been issued and completed. The Board of Trustees and the Oversight Committee is grateful to the entire Board for the investor-focused agenda that has been coming out of the agenda consultation process, and we're pleased with the progress there. We did talk about the current environment and the risks and challenges in the current environment. As Rich talked about, we got an update in the post-implementation review. And one of the things that we're pleased with is that it is a very substantive process, which is in fact consulting and adjustments to standards based upon feedback from all of our stakeholders, which gives us confidence in the PIR process. We also had a very, very good and informative discussion around educational session on how investor feedback is considered in the standard-setting process, from consultation to feedback, to making sure that we get the views of all investors and that we're actively seeking that, not just waiting for it to come to us. And it was a very helpful session for the Board of Trustees to go through. We also discussed the PCC effectiveness review that Ed announced in his opening comments. And just to give a little bit more color there, we will be launching for the second time. We last did it in 2015. We'll be launching, the FAFF will be launching feedback from our stakeholders on the PCC process. Specifically, we'll launch that on Thursday, February 29th, in comments that we do on May 31st, 2024, although we certainly will welcome them sooner than that, so we can get through all of those comments. And we invite anybody to comment. Specifically, what we're looking for is opportunities for improvement, opportunities for stakeholders' use as to the effectiveness of the PCC, and we look forward to that feedback as well. With that, Ed, that completes our report, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Manju or Tim? And seeing none, our last report is from the FAFF Executive Director, John Auchincloss.
Thank you, Ed, and good afternoon to everybody. I'd like to start off by talking briefly about our project to renew our organization's websites, redesign and renew. You know, our websites are a critical component of how we engage with stakeholders and provide transparency to the standard-setting process. I'm very pleased to announce that we recently launched brand-new websites for the FASB, GASB, and the FAFF. And our listeners can find them at fasb.org, gasb.org, and accountingfoundation.org. We, you know, we immodestly think that these websites are a great improvement over what we had before. And I'd like to thank the whole team that worked on them, including our colleagues from the FASB and GASB, and in particular, our Vice President of Communications, Matt Broder, and our Chief Operating Officer, Mary Crotty, and their respective teams. Next, I'd like to give a brief update on our budget. Our Board of Trustees approved our 2024 budget back in October of last fall. Following that, we submitted it to the SEC, as we do every year, in order so that, in order so the Commission could review whether the FASB's proposed accounting support fees, which are part of that budget, meet with the requirements of Section 109 of the Sarbanes-Oxley Act. I'm happy to report that last week, February 22nd, the SEC issued an order finding that the FASB's accounting support fees, proposed accounting support fees, in fact, do meet those requirements. So now we're going to begin working, as we usually do, with the PCAOB and the FINRA to collect the FASB's and the GASB's accounting support fees respectively. And we will be posting on our website details of our 2024 budget and of our accounting support fees. And I'd like to remind our listeners that the FAFF voluntarily contributes a substantial portion of its other revenues, which it obtains from licensing activities, to offset our accounting support fees, and we plan to do that, continue to do that going forward. So the details will be available on our website. I'd like to join our Chair in welcoming our two new trustees, Michael and Beth. We're so happy to have them with us today. And mention that our Appointments Committee of our Board of Trustees is very busy already with the work of trying to fill the slots of five trustees who will be leaving this coming December. So that work, as I mentioned, is ongoing, and we hope to complete it by the fall in time for our November trustee meeting. Lastly, I'd just like to reiterate something that Tim Ryan just talked about, which is the PCC review that we will be issuing shortly. And note that the comment deadline is 10 And note that the comment deadline, as Tim mentioned, will be May 31st. Stakeholder input is critical to the success of our PCC review. And we look forward to hearing from all our stakeholders about opportunities to make the PCC even more effective in fulfilling its mission. With that, I would turn things back to you, Ed, unless there are any questions.
Great. Any questions for John? Okay, thanks. So with that, this is the end of the public session of today's FAF Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you again to those of you who've tuned into the webcast. I'd like to remind everyone that the next FAF Board of Trustees meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 22nd in Washington, DC. Thanks very much and have a great day.